Good afternoon, I'm calling to order the House Committee on Consumer Protection and Commerce. It is Thursday, April 4th, 2024, 2 P. Actually, it's 2:20 PM. Conference Room 329, I just want to extend my appreciation to all the testifiers today for their patience. We'll just get right into it. Just want to note limiting testimony to two minutes. I'll let you know when to wrap it up. Okay, first we have SB 3194, SD2HD1 relating to energy. First to testify on this measure, we have Michelangelo from DCCA's Division of Consumer Advocacy with comments.
Vice Chair, Chair Member of the Committee, Mickey Knox for the Division of Consumer Advocacy. We just stand on our comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chair Leo Sanchen from the Public Utilities Commission in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Representative Onishi, Leo Sanchen, Chair of the PUC. We'll stand on our written testimony in support of the measure and will be available for any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office with comments. Not here. Okay, we'll be moving on to Peter Young from Hawaiian Electric with comments on Zoom.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Peter Young from the Pricing Division, Hawaiian Electric. We wanted to emphasize two of the principles in our testimony, equity and unintended consequences. With regard to equity, the impact of a wheeling transaction goes beyond the generator and the receiver. But there may be economic consequences and technical consequences to the grid. Regulatory policies must make sure that they don't shift costs to non-wheeling customers and have appropriate technical requirements. With regard to unintended consequences, there are existing programs and it would be an incremental work requirement for both the company and the PUC over a considerable period of time. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Please come ahead and state your name.
Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. So, um, the goal of getting to 100% renewable energy is set to get there by 2045, right? And yet, we still have this reliance on imported petroleum, which is a fossil fuel. And bad for the planet, bad for the earth. So as you're setting this policy, working with the Public Utilities Commission, these are things to consider. Burning and producing fossil fuels creates pollution that harms our health, generates toxic emissions that drives climate change. And from the electric power that lights up our homes to the cars we drive to work, modern life was built on toxic fossil fuels like coal, oil, and natural gas. So in the electric power transmission, wheeling is the transportation of electric energy from within an electrical grid to an electrical load. So in this discussion, when you're dealing with the infrastructure, right, of renewable energy, and although this is a state office, you have to consider that the city also builds infrastructure. So when you're planning these state overall goals, and especially with like the discussion of housing to create more density, it's going to affect infrastructure policies. Our advocacy is just to bring to your attention that there needs to be a consideration of infrastructure at the city as well as we move towards renewable energy sources. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other persons here to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, we do have written testimony in support from Blue Planet Foundation, Hawaii Solar Energy Association, comments from Ulupono Initiative, and support from the Hawaii Clean Power Alliance. Members, any questions on this measure? Represent-- oh, go ahead. Representative Onishi.
Yes, for the PUC. Thank you, Leo, for being here. You know, in your testimony, you talk about efforts that you've-- the PUC has taken to look at wheeling.
Yep.
So in my mind, I would think that the PUC has the ability to open a docket regarding this issue and specifically to look at wheeling and if there's a possibility of it being a public good and how you would go about authorizing it, creating rules, regulations, so that it would serve a public purpose and not just the producer and the consumer that that producer sells that energy.
Yes, you're correct, Representative. The commission can, on its own accord, on its own motion, open a docket, an investigatory docket, into any items, right, under the purview of the commission. We've done it before in some of these items. Some of them were applications from, right, the utility and other parties. But certainly, we can do that. I think you have my commitment. This is one item that, you know, I was at Hawaiian Electric when this all started, and we're still discussing it today. But now, we're discussing it in more discreet items around microgrids and things like that. But we still kind of missing that overall picture. So at least from myself, and I could probably speak for the commissioners that are on the commission now, this is something that we want to look at, whether or not it is prudent to do, touch upon a lot of the issues that Mr. Young brought up and probably others. And so certainly, you have my commitment that we could do it without legislation.
So I understand you, the commitment that you could do it.
Yeah.
Will you make that effort to actually open a docket? And I know in your testimony, you said that 2026 would be reasonable, a timeframe for you to report to the legislature.
Yeah, we could do that. You'll have my commitment right now that we will open a docket. And we'll have-- 2026 was something that we were looking at. The bill originally was 2025. That would be too short by the next session. That's why we said to push it out to 2026. It depends upon, right, all the different issues. It might take a little longer. But right now, as our commitments through the testimonies, you know, as far as the bill, it has always been trying to get it done by 2026.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Chair.
I was going to ask Mr. Sanchen the same questions that Rep. Onishi already asked. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Okay, members, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to the next item on the agenda, SB 2342, SD 2 HD 1 relating to transportation. First to testify on this measure, we have David Williams, our Deputy Attorney General, from the AG's office with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and-- call Chair Onishi. David Williams, Deputy Attorney General from Criminal Justice Division. The department takes no position on the bill but wants to offer comments. That's in our testimony. Section 291(c)(105) subsection C designates excessive speeding as a petty misdemeanor. HRS 706663 from the Hawaii Penal Code limits a judge's sentencing a person to a-- for a petty misdemeanor to a maximum of 30 days jail. Thus, the proposed maximum jail of 90 days for third excessive speeding offense exceeds the maximum set forth in 706663. And our recommendation would be to keep the maximum jail at 30 days or designate a third offense excessive speeding separately as a misdemeanor offense. Or the committee could just increase the current mandatory jail on the third offense. So thank you for the opportunity to provide comments, and I will remain for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have the Insurance Division from DCCA with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, and Representatives. I'm Jerry Bump, DCCA Insurance Division. You have our written testimony. We'll stand on our comments that we've submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Hugo from the Honolulu Department of the Prosecuting Attorney in support. None here. We'll be moving on to Devon Ayagi from Tirol Inc. with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, other committee members. Devon Ayagi with Tirol. We'll stand on our testimony, offering comments. We just want to sort of, I guess, point out that the potential increase in minimums further underscores the need for parity between traditional rental car and peer-to-peer car sharing. And yeah, we support this, any efforts to bring that parity. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Anie Makapagal from the American Property Casualty Insurance Association in opposition.
That was a really good job this time.
I apologize. Eventually, I will get it right.
We'll stand on my testimony in opposition, of course, but I just have a couple of comments. And as you know, the insurance rates continue to go up, and the pandemic didn't help. Across the board, not just auto, but property, condo, et cetera, insurers are leaving the islands, and it's getting difficult to find insurance within certain price ranges. Car insurance is just one of the costs in owning a car. You have registration, you have maintenance, oil, gas is going up. And on top of all of that, it's just simply the high cost of living in Hawaii. I know the example of buying a cup of coffee has been used as an example. But quite frankly, it, I think, that pocket of people that can actually afford a Starbucks coffee, that's not the-- they're already-- they already can't afford the price of Starbucks coffee. The people are going to be mostly affected by this raise in the minimum. And at the end of the day, it's just, I know it's a policy decision, and we certainly appreciate the weight of some of these issues that go before you. But quite frankly, I don't think it should be, we should be raising the limits just because it's been blank amount of years since we're, since it's, uh, it's been raised. And then, um, and should, should the, should you, just finally, should you decide to increase the minimum, we would like to point out that we would really hope that you consider a delayed date. I think it's also mentioned in the Insurance Commissioner's testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marilyn Newall from Newall &amp; Roberts, CPAs and PC, in support on Zoom.
Hi. Hi. Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Sayama, I testify in support of this bill, particularly on the sections regarding the raising the limits of liability. And this provisions on how much of the insurance coverage is, hasn't been changed, I believe, in 25 years. And since then, medical costs have gone up quite a bit since then. And since I actually experienced a bad car accident on Maui, I really learned a lot about how little this $20,000 insurance is. I would like to have PIP increase, but absent that, I think that for the benefit of the state of Hawaii, whoever is a driver, I believe that this insurance limit should be raised because it doesn't cover enough for those people who are victims and people who are pedestrians who get hit by cars, who could benefit from it. They also will be left as victims. And so what I learned was, if you are a victim of a car accident in Hawaii, you remain a victim because the costs, the amount of insurance provided under the state law is just totally inadequate. And it just doesn't cover all the expenses that you have to have. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Evan Owe from the Hawaii Association for Justice in Support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Evan Owe on behalf of HJJ. We stand in strong support of this measure. You know, as mentioned in the previous testimony, the insurance minimum levels haven't been touched in over 25 years, since 1998. And, you know, that's actually led into a 50% reduction in consumer protection. When you take those $20,000 from 1998 and you extrapolate it into today's numbers, the average is around $40,000 to $45,000. So, you know, we're ultimately, our consumers are lacking the protection that they need when they're on the roads. And, you know, in conjunction, we strongly support, you know, the levels of $50,000 and $100,000 in the aggregate. And we did a cost analysis, which is included within our testimony. And as you can see, you know, on a yearly basis, you're looking at an increased cost of about $25 to $70 or about $2 to $6 per month for an additional $30,000 in coverage. So we feel as though that, that is, you know, from a consumer protection standpoint, necessary at this point in time. And, you know, thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals here to testify on this measure? Please come up. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you please mute yourself on some-- oh, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch. We train with Honolulu Police Department's community policing team, and we have to manage the safety of the schools and bad driving behavior. So I'm going to read research from CDC, DOT, and the National Highway--
Sorry, to clarify, you in support or opposition comments?
Traffic Safety Administration. I'm in support.
Thank you.
And I'm also going to read data from these sources from 2020. So there were 104,000 emergency department visits because of pedestrian injuries caused by cars. And one in five children under the age of 15 were killed in the United States. And fatalities injuring people include driving behavior such as speeding-related, alcohol-impaired driving, and seatbelt fatalities. And urban fatalities went up by 8.5%, rural fatalities went up by 2.3%, and older drivers, 65 and older, involved in crashes decreased by 9.8%. So there's a list of number of data points that show that driver behavior has become increasingly intolerable in the United States. And many community members from Kalihii-Kapalama have noticed hazardous conditions. And the research of this act shows students at public schools are getting injured. So you need safeguards and deterrents in the state law to improve safety. A safeguard starts with this measure to set a standard for public safety awareness with an enhanced level of protection for consumers to deter dangerous driving behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons here to testify on this measure? Oh, please come up.
Afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair Matsujimura on behalf of State Farm Insurance. We submitted written testimony. If you need it, I can give you another copy. But we are testifying in opposition. Just want to point out that the current insurance kind of structure, the way it's provided right now, affords the maximum affordability and opportunity for people to purchase insurance. The concern here is that, should you increase the minimums, that you'll squeeze out those people who can least afford to purchase what, purchase insurance at the new minimum level that you would be raising it to versus right now, for those of people who can only afford what is available to them, they can purchase that and have some form of protection to be able to drive versus for those who feel that they need additional coverage, that option is also available to them. So just want to point out that fact. If the committee feels compelled to move this bill, we are, we do include in our written testimony three potential amendments for your consideration, but happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other person here to testify? Seeing none, members, we do have written testimony with comments from the Hawaii Insurance Council, opposition from Hertz Corporation, and support from five individuals. Members, any questions? Representative Onishi.
Yes, for the Insurance Commission? I just wanted to clarify. Thank you for being here, by the way. I just wanted to clarify your testimony. In your testimony, you are suggesting that we eliminate paragraph 2 on page 14 and wait and see what happens with the initial raise of whatever amount we set the minimum requirements to be versus doing it in another three-year increment.
Yeah, so as the bill was drafted, it included, originally included amounts in, for an initial raise, and then two years later, an additional raise. And we at the division felt like it would be inappropriate to do that automatic increase in two years without looking at the impact and the analysis, if you choose to do so, of increasing the rates--
Right.
--the initial time.
Does the commission have information as to the number of, like, I guess, vehicles, insurance policies, and coverages so that we could analyze what the impact would be? Say, you know, if we raise it from 20 to 40, how that would change, you know? I mean, because we know how many registered vehicles we have.
Correct.
And they should all be covered by some form of insurance, correct?
They should be, but unfortunately, there is an uninsured population--
But is it possible for you to get the data as to how many of those registered vehicles are actually covered by some form of insurance policy?
I think we may know in the aggregate, like, you know, how many are covered. But as far as what types of coverage the individual policyholders have, we at the division, I don't think, have that data.
Is that something--
In other words, I wouldn't know what your, your coverage is and--
Yeah, is that something the legislature could mandate insurance carriers to provide in aggregate, you know? I mean--
I'd have to go back and check with the commissioner and check with the, the branch that would maybe would be, you know, enact that type of, you know, potential receiving that data. It may be a little bit challenging to get, you know, all that data coming in. Depends on the frequency that we would have to request it and so forth.
Well, I mean, basically, we're just asking for aggregate data, right? We're not asking for--
I think we've done some analysis as far as maybe if there is a certain target amount, if you're looking to increase it, and we could get that to you. You know, if you're looking-- right now, it's currently 2040, you know, and if you were going to go to 2550 or whatever the amount is that the-- you know, you want to decide, we could take a look and try to, you know, look at what the impact would be.
Yeah, I mean-- so the argument the insurers are making is that raising the limit automatically may exclude people or would drive up costs to insurers-- I mean, to the public. But we don't even know if they already are exceeding the 20. How much of them are already exceeding the $20,000 minimum limit?
Correct. There are-- we don't have the statistics of that either. You know, there are a number of people who choose to purchase more than the minimum. Increasing the minimums, as others have stated, may put pressure on people who can barely afford the minimums right now, and they may make that choice to drive uninsured, which isn't what we would want.
Sure, but we don't know how many of those people there are.
Correct. In some of the testimony, I think it usually ranges between 8% and 10% of the population of people who have registered vehicles are currently uninsured.
Uninsured?
Correct.
But that could be for multiple reasons.
Sure.
Not necessarily the limit on the insurance--
Not necessarily the cost of the premiums. It may just be a conscious choice, you know, but yeah.
Or because of their driving record, they cannot get insurance.
No, you can get insurance-- there is an insurer of last resort in the state. So even if the voluntary market doesn't want to provide insurance to that high-risk driver, that individual can still get insurance in the state for the minimum amounts required by law.
Okay. So if the bill was amended to ask the Insurance Commissioner to look at gathering data, would-- I mean, that could be possible.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll be taking a short recess for decision-making recess.
Okay, committee on consumer protection and commerce. Thursday, April 4, 2024. We are in room 329 for decision-making. On the first measure, Senate Bill 3194, Senate Draft 2, House Draft 1 relating to energy. Given the discussion with the PUC chair, we will defer this measure for the time being. Next, on Senate Bill 2342 relating to transportation. The chair's recommendation is that we adopt the AG's recommendations to amend section 291(c)(5) to classify the third offense within a five-year period to a misdemeanor. And the AG is still here. We will accept their offer to draft language for this change for the conference. Thank you very much. The Insurance Commissioners' recommendation regarding delay to January 1, 2027, and increase-- increases proposals in section 6, page 14 to include the-- to be included in the committee report. Would delete line 17-- oh, page 17, lines 12 to 18 issuing the minimum-- issuing the Insurance Commissioners' memorandum reference amendments made to section 431-43110c-301b2 and A and B in the HRS, and make the effective date of this section January 1, 2026. Members-- oh, and yeah, and include a savings clause in this measure. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I just-- I think it's important that we try to figure out what the actual impact would be should this bill get finally passed and rates-- not rates, but the minimum requirement insurance be raised, what actual impact there is. You know, it might be minimal in terms of the number of people that it would affect because they may already have that level of coverage. So maybe if in-- at least in the committee report, that, you know, there might be a way for the Insurance Commissioner to try to see if they can gather data as to what coverages are.
Okay, we will include that in the committee report.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Voting on SB 2342 SD 2 HD 1, chair's recommendation is to pass the amendments. Chair, Vice Chair, vote aye. Representative Amato.
Aye.
Representative Bellotti, excused. Representative Hashem.
Aye.
Representative Hossi Burdick.
Reservation.
Reservations. Representative Gates, excused. Representative Lowen, excused. Representative Onishi.
Aye.
Representative Tam.
Aye.
Representative Pirek.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.